Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and the city in which we live. Guide us this evening as we make our decisions. Christ's name.
Amen.
Sorry to double tap. You were all just a bit too loud. This is the May 27th, 2025, regular meeting of the City of Noonan. You have the minutes before you, May 13th, 2025. I'll entertain the motion we got from them.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. We adopt the minutes as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carried. If you staff, Mr. Phillips, if you'll put all of the next appointments on the next agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Do you have anything today?
I do not, Mayor. Thank you.
I don't have anything today. We're right into new business all of a sudden. Public hearing is the first item G, a request to demolish structure at 385 Jackson Street. As you see the picture on your screen, Mr. Parton, how are you doing?
I'm well, thank you. How are you all?
Good.
Good.
This is a public hearing on this issue that I'm going to open at this time. Mr. Parton?
Yes, sir. We received an application to demolish the structure at 385 Jackson Street. Perspective owner wishes to tear that down and build themselves a new building.
Okay, and Dr. Ellison is here, Jim. You have indicated that you would like to speak, so this is public hearing. You have the podium.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Just want to say we're grateful to be at this season and we're excited about the potential, what can happen at 385 Jackson Street and looking forward to seeing that building come down and a brand-new, beautiful building come up from the ground in that spot.
We appreciate you doing that here. Any questions, Dr. Ellison?
I'd just say I've seen the elevations of it. It's gorgeous. So kudos to whoever drew it.
We, our architect, Tom Coe, is going to build it for us. Our architect is Doug, who has done some other drawings here for us in the city.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other questions? I saw a hand come up. Ma'am, if you'll come forward and state your name for the record, this is a public hearing and we do take public comments during those. You'll state your name for the record, please.
Hi, thank you, sir. My name is Laura Williams. I live in a neighborhood right behind the building and I was just wondering what this was going to be and would it interfere with our quality of life as far as our backyard when we see now is greenery? Would that change?
Both, all three excellent questions. Dr. Ellison or Mr. Crimes maybe as the construction company? So, address you or how does this work?
Just to me, please.
Okay.
So this will be a church, Noonan City Church. We're building our first building and there will be, the trees will not be removed on that backside.
You got a thumbs up. That's good news.
Yeah, yeah.
Anyone else would like to speak to this issue? This is public hearing on the request to demolish structure at 385 Jackson Street in Noonan. Anyone? Seeing no one come forward, I'm going to close the public hearing at this time and ask for a recommendation from council or vote, motion from the council.
Second.
Motion and second. We approve the request to demolish the structure at 385 Jackson Street. My only question is, when do you begin? We are the, we have to get asbestos removed. Okay. And so, once that's done, we'll have it lined up to come down hopefully into July or in August. You talking about that?
It's like slow your roll.
Great question. The building will probably begin the demolition sooner than the, the plans are all in for permit now and as soon as the departments have their chance to address any concerns and we answer them, so just as soon as we can get through the permit process, then we will begin immediately. Okay. Thank you. We appreciate that.
I do have one question. Councilman Thomason mentioned that there is a drawing somewhere. Since you don't know what was going on, I would love you to share that with her so that the neighbors will know what's going on.
Okay. So we have it upstairs?
I saw the newspaper.
It was in newspapers, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So the drawing in the newspaper is accurate? Yes, sir. And it's been through the department. They have renderings of it as well. Okay. So online, Noonan Times Herald. Yes, sir. And it's internal in the city here. We did not bring any with us today, unfortunately, but we can make sure that we get you. Okay. Like, any other questions? I'll call the questions. I'll call the question. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carried. Thank you. Mr. Klar is up next with a consideration of an engineering services master agreement improvements to Lower Fayetteville Road. How are you tonight, Mr. Klar?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The next two are related. The first one is the engineering services master agreement and what this will do, will lay out the administrative framework for our selected engineering firm Heath and Lineback to move forward with the Lower Fayetteville Road improvement project from Greason Trail out past Laura Smith Road. We're at, we had completed the concept report, had been approved, and so we're ready for the next phase and this will govern the way the next phase is done. So we would recommend that you allow us to enter into this service masters agreement with Heath and Lineback.
Any questions?
Make a motion we approve.
All right.
Second.
Motion is second. We approve as presented. Any discussion, questions?
I have a question. Looking at big picture, overall costs and stuff like that, does it make sense to continue to move forward? Just looking at.
Somebody else is going to have to answer that question. I don't, in my opinion, yes. But, I mean, if you don't move forward with something like that, what are you going to have? It's going to be a mess even worse than we have today.
I'll chime in on that. Part of my concern is, and maybe it's in the next one coming up, is, yeah, it is on the, I, on the agenda, we're looking at $9 million in today's number, okay? So this is the way I'm reading it and understanding it, so correct me if I'm wrong, with a funding by the federal aid of $7 million, leaving us with basically 1.8 million to pay out of our pocket. But that's today's numbers. Is that fair to say? So in seven years, when you even think about starting the project or whatever, is that, what's that number going to be then? And that's where I'm, have some serious concerns. This is not real numbers. This is just today's numbers. This is not seven-year numbers.
But how do you work in seven-year numbers? We can't, I mean, you can't predict inflation and I can't either, but in general, tax revenue goes with inflation, the same number, I mean, relatively cost. I can't say it's exact, but it would be relative. Everything else goes up.
I don't know. It just seems like it's been going up for.
Councilman, this is the exact number that's good for the duration of the next phase of the project. It will not change.
For the next phase, so starting from all the way out to Laura Smith Road.
This is not construction. This is design.
Just, just.
But I need to reiterate.
That's my point. You see, this is just design of a project and then now you get into the dollar, real dollar value, $9 million for design.
Yes. I can, I'll explain all of it to it when we get to task order number one, unless you want me to go ahead and go through task order number one right now.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine. Maybe we need to get to that point.
Well, I thought I had a motion, a second to approve this. So need to call the question on this to see where we want to do, unless you want to withdraw your motions.
No, I don't want to.
Second. Okay. I'll call the question. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign.
Aye.
Okay. It was a five-two in favor vote. Am I correct? Just the two negative votes? Am I correct? Okay, good. Thank you. Okay. So on to item I, Mr. Klar.
This is task order number one and task order number one is where the, we have secured the federal funding, as the councilman said, of $9 million with the 20% match being 1.8 million dollars and this will produce the design documents, the environmental documents, the right-of-way documents and the 1.8 million is cost shared with the Coweta County. Lower Fayetteville Road goes in and out of the county and it'll be a pro-rata amount and, you know, they'll pay, they'll pay part of it. We're the local sponsors, so that's why it's all in our documents, but we have an intergovernmental agreement with them. We also have a project framework agreement where you all have previously committed to the project with GDOT. So it may be difficult to stop the process at this point, so I don't even know how that works.
Well, we saw in the agenda that this has been approved to move forward.
Yes, sir.
With GDOT.
Yes, sir. That's what I'm getting at with our project framework agreement.
Okay.
So basically, it's an automatic yes. I mean.
No, well, no, it's not an automatic yes, but I think there are ramifications, financial ramifications on the city. If we were to back out at any point now, we may have to give back all the money that we had already, they had already given us for their earlier phases.
Sure. Well, that clears it up for me then.
Okay.
The only thing I just want to just say is this is 9 million to just, for seven years. That's where I'm having, forgive me, but I'm just having a hard time with that kind of change and then we haven't even moved into the construction costs.
That's right.
And maybe they're in here, but I'm sorry, I couldn't really, you know, the small eye test that was in this, all through the numbers, et cetera, but, you know, I'm just, that's really my concern. I live on Lower Fayetteville Road. I mean, I get it. It's, I'm not real sure if it's, if a four-lane is what's needed, if it's a three-lane or just, there's something, I mean, it's, it's traffic, but show me a place where there isn't. So, you know.
Or potentially even just reducing the scope.
I don't know.
Um, recent, you know, or something. So anyways, it's a lot of expense. It's a lot of potential tax dollars.
The master agreement is for seven years. Task order number one won't take seven years. We put it in there in case something happened and we didn't have to come back to extend the master service agreement. I believe on the first phase, we ran beyond the timeline and then we didn't know what to do with that. So this time, we're just trying to plan ahead. I had one more thought. I guess I don't.
Is there a motion?
I say move.
Second.
Motion is second. We approve task order number one as presented. Any other discussion, questions?
I do have a question. What is the timeline? Because I couldn't read it either. Let's just be real.
Design or construction?
What's the time, design?
Right now, the timeline is being tracked by the ARC as start of construction in 2031. It'll take us probably two years. We have 172 individual parcels that we've got to work with and it could take two years to acquire the right-of-way that we need for this, where we don't have it. And the point that I was going to make is that when we get down to the construction, we are 100% going to phase this in. And right now, we're looking at a phase one from about Noonan Lakes to just to the other side of Noonan Crossing Boulevard East. So that, you know, and GDOT is agreeable to that. They kind of believe that that looks logical to them as well. So, but we're going to complete the design and be ready to phase it down however you want when the design is finished.
Yeah, because many years ago, we priced this thing out with a old design and it was far too much for us to do. So doing a phased-in approach, absolutely.
It's probably $131 million for full construction, but again, the feds are going to give you 80% of that back to the City of Noonan, so.
Yeah. So.
I have a motion, a second, to approve task order number one as presented. Any other questions? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign.
Aye.
Okay, so just a six-one. All right, thank you. Six-one. The next item, thank you, Mr. Klar. The next item, Mr. Craver, is a consideration proposal, design and engineering related to link section 13. How are you today?
I'm well, Mayor Brady. I hope you are. Members of the council, at our May retreat, you gave direction to city staff to engage a firm to design a section of link portion 13. We came back to offices after that retreat, engaged our on-call contract through Columbia Engineering at the time and sought a task order from them, similar to what you just discussed, of work to be done under an existing contract. During the time in which the staff at Columbia was preparing this task order, they had some significant personnel changes. The individuals that we had worked with and our primary relationships no longer work for that firm. Others have since no long, decided to no longer work at that firm. At that point, some of the senior staff got together and decided it was smart if we would go out and get proposals from other firms in Georgia who have great experience working with multi-use trails. We did that. Those firms are listed in your agenda item. After soliciting their interest, city staff met with them to make sure that the scope was known and agreed upon for each one of those firms. Essentially, they're submitting a proposal where everything is apples to apples. We solicited those proposals. We received four proposals from those firms, one of which was Columbia, the existing firm. They did submit that task order, but we received proposals from three other firms, Pond and Company, Thomas and Hutton, and the PATH Foundation and Kaizen Collaborative. I'm recommending that the city council consider engaging the PATH Foundation and Kaizen Collaborative to perform the design work as you requested at your May 27, 28 retreat. And I can answer questions you may have about anything that was submitted to you.
And Greta's here.
And Greta DiMayo is here. You probably, for those of you who are, you were all here building trail with us together, so you may recognize Greta.
Welcome back.
And y'all did a great job, Greta. It's still here. People are enjoying it.
Yep.
And with that, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the recommendation for PATH Foundation and Kaizen.
Motion is second. We accept the recommendation for the consideration proposal, design and engineering services related to link section 13.
I have a couple of questions first.
Yes, please.
Looking at this path on here, is this, I know that part of your project, of course, will be to design the path, but is this generally where we're going to put this?
Yes, ma'am. That's where, there will be a concept confirmation time period where path being kind of new, if I may, for this section. They'll come back and confirm the concept that you all looked at and contemplated at the retreat that showed the general location of where the trail will be.
Okay.
Final approval.
Final approval. Because I had one, at one point, we were discussing whether or not this would go deeper into the Noonan Utilities property to be closer to the lakes. And so I'm trying to figure out where that is in this discussion or has that just been decided we're not going to put it near the lakes?
I don't think it's been decided that we will not do that. I think, you know, currently, because of the topography challenges that exist there, lots of bridging. As you probably know, when you get to the bottom of Cougar Way and Sewell Road, there's a big drop off. To get much deeper into there would be a lot more trail, probably a lot more bridging. So right now, the concept is to keep it somewhat closer to Sewell Road, but then as we get up and we interact through Carl Miller Park and then come to intersection with Spence Avenue, we are much closer and we, there's potential, you know, I don't want to speak for others not in the room, but there's potential to connect to the watershed lake system, I think, much easier.
On the other side.
Once we're at the office, that Sewell Road office.
Okay. And then the second question is, I think when we approved doing this, we said this would not affect the other legs of the link that we had already approved, like 15 and going out.
Yeah, 12, coming out of First Avenue Park.
Right.
Right. We're still working in, if I may just be frank, the changes in staff at Columbia really threw us for a loop. So we're going to have to engage another firm to come back and look at how we can sequence that, but it is not a pile that's left our desk. And so it's still there. We wanted to get this out for sensitivity of time in order to get a full design done so that we can have it out to bid in order to meet the school system break schedule. So next summer, we believe if we engage a firm now, they can go through this design process, we can get it out, get it to bid, build the facility adjacent to the school while school's out. And if you may recall from the retreat, we talked about sequencing that also with paving of the roadways along. So some of the timing on this one for this section is making us move a little bit more quickly, but the others are not forgotten. We'll likely need to find a firm to help us confirm that layout, that concept.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we are still moving forward with those elements to get out to the west side of town.
Yes, we are.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question.
Sure.
And just help me understand this. Columbia, they've had, you know, a lot of turnover, I get that, and yet they still submitted a proposal and they were the cheapest bidder.
Right.
And they have the corporate knowledge of what's left. Why not go with Columbia still than PATH?
So if you may look in your packet, yes, they had the least costly proposal, but as you recall, they had some work done ahead of time. So they've already performed a lot of the conceptual layout that the newer firms will need to do and come back and look at. And so, you know, that coupled with the fact that, you know, there was significant personnel turnover in that facility, within that firm.
We own their previous work.
That's correct.
So we'd be able to turn that over to them?
Yes, all the proposers have seen it and looked at it.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just concerned, it's extra, what, $25,000 that roughly.
That's right.
Would potentially, you know, why not keep with what we have?
Well, I think, I think the comment is, he doesn't want to say it, but I will. I think what we had is not what we have and hand.
Yes, sir.
Even though they submitted.
Right.
It's not the same group that we had before.
No. And I get it. Yeah, no, I understand that. So, okay.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a motion, a second, to approve. Any further questions, discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Ms. Kelsey's up with a consideration to pursue Georgia Outdoor Stewardship Grant.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, City Council. You'll recall during our retreat, we spent a lot of time talking about our retreat today. One of the items we discussed was, you know, looking at future or other grant opportunities that are out there, specifically kind of around trail development. This grant, which is called the Georgia Outdoor Stewardship Grant, is administered by the Georgia Department of Natural Resources. It provides aid in things such as local parks and trails, critical conservation lands. It's given to state agencies, qualified local governments, recreation authorities, non-governmental entities with the core of conservation as their purpose. In looking at this grant, the minimum amount to request is $500,000 with a maximum amount of $3 million. One of those projects that we talked about, as we talked about the trail, is building of the Arboretum project and we think that these dollars would be a good proposed use for that. So we thought we'd spend a little bit of time talking about it with the city council, seeing if you had any interest in making application. I did kind of put together a bullet list for you of kind of what the scoring looks like. It's a very competitive process. You'll see that in '24 and '25, there were 12 projects that were approved and only five of those were city, seven of those were state agencies. So we will need to put together a very tight application with things like a site plan, a conceptual plan, budget documents. We'll have to do a phase one environmental assessment. We already own the property, so we wouldn't have to ask for any acquisition cost for that. I also kind of provided you a list of the cities that were funded and kind of a synopsis of what those projects look like and all of those projects have trails in there, things like pond overlooks, fishing platforms. A lot of this involves acquisition of green space, if you kind of look through that list. But in order to move forward with this application, the city will have to spend some resources. Potentially, we might look at hiring someone to help write the grant application. We'll definitely need to spend money from a firm to come in and help us put together a site plan, put together budgets. All of those type things are going to require some, you know, funds that this grant's not going to pay for. This is a reimbursable grant. So it looks like, you know, we would start putting this together probably in the near future with a deadline of submittal on October 17th if council has any interest in moving forward with this for that particular project. If you have other projects that, you know, you think you might want to talk about, we're certainly open to that, but it certainly seemed to fit our need to continue our trail development and also that wonderful arboretum idea that's been out there. And we certainly work with our partners, our number of partners, and that will help strengthen our application as we work with all of those groups.
Yeah, this grant application came to my attention through a letter in the mail from the state, which is, you know, they're still mailing things out, which is what most of the things we get today are emails. But I think it's a great fit. I would strongly recommend that the council support a grant writer and go out and find, and for the city to go out and find a grant writer who's been successful in these types of grants. I remember years ago, Boys and Girls Club, one of the, one of the cycles we were in, we missed the grant. Next time around, we hired the person who got that grant before and all of a sudden, we got the grant. So there are people who understand the words and they understand exactly what to say and how to say it. So I would recommend that we, if we want to go forward with this, that we recommend that we do use a grant writer. I don't know that we have anyone on staff with that skill set, quite frankly, or the time to do it.
So if I could ask a question, with that being said, what's the proposed, I mean, there's no dollar amount necessarily, but how much are we looking at for doing a plan, an assessment, getting the documents and a grant writer rough ballpark?
Phase one environmental, Mr. Phillips, is how much, 1,500?
Yeah, phase one is very just paperwork, yeah, 1,500 to 2,500 max. You're probably looking.
It's a 40-foot side. So it depends on how much.
That's very true, very true. The most of the cost is going to either be in the grant writing or in the conceptual plan development because you're going to hire someone that's very strong with, you know, landscape architecture.
Well, we've already got.
We have, we don't have a proposal.
No, but they're working on it.
But there are, you know, I'm afraid to throw a cost out now. I think you're probably going to spend, minimum, what, $30,000 probably for.
You know, and there are many occasions where the grant writing fee and the fee of the grant writer can come back out of the, out of the award.
But about also, I would say this, and of course, staff supports this application. We think there is a great opportunity here and I think we can put together a strong application. But even if we don't win the award, there is value in the documents that will be produced because, you know, if, if this body wants to continue to build that arboretum at some point in time, you've got to have a starting document anyway. So I don't think it's going to be wasted monies.
Mr. Phillips, do we have a funding source? Do we have money available?
We'll have to use some general fund, funding sources.
Which you can find it.
I believe, yeah.
So, quick question then, is on the bottom, you said 30. Top end, what would you say we'd be pushing? 75?
I don't have it in front of me, so it's, I haven't solicited those quotes.
You're never going to do it.
I'd like to make a motion that we direct staff to, to make this application for the grant.
Staff or with the grant writer?
With the grant writer, yes. With hiring.
I'll second that motion. All right. Could I add to that, that staff come back to us with funding?
Yes.
Information.
Okay. Any other questions, comments on this?
So is there, so this is just a look at the cost on this? Is this also like a not to exceed cost at this point of 50,000 until we move forward?
He accepted an amendment to his motion that, that staff would come back to us with some numbers.
Okay, yep.
To give us, to get them to move forward with providing those numbers to us. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried, thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Norton's up with the consideration of a contract extension for debris monitoring, disaster recovery, emergency planning services, and public assistance. How are you, Mr. Norton?
Doing good, Mr. Mayor. I hope you and council are doing well. I actually combined two of the contracts into one gen item, tried to speed things up. But these are for the actual, the PA is the public assistance, the reimbursement, where they actually get us our money in case of a disaster. And the debris monitoring is a service that we have to have for FEMA to, to reimburse us. Same process that we use with the, the tornado, there's no cost to this unless we activate it.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion to second, we approve the contract extension for debris monitoring at all. Any discussion?
So this is gonna be two separate motions, one for monitoring and one for debris? PA or is this?
All of this is wrapped up into one?
So into one?
I think I would do two separate motions, simply because if you get audited, you can look to one motion and then look to the other motion. I would also recommend that in the debris monitor, monitoring extension, that we let the mayor sign on behalf of the city of Nunnan, and not Foley Beach Express, although I was on the Foley Beach Express three weeks ago going Orange Beach. Very nice area, so, but I.
I saw that, I saw that earlier, I thought maybe I had moved, but.
I'm not sure Foley Beach Express LLC would appreciate the mayor trying to obligate him to come.
I understand. Okay, so clarification on the motion on the floor is for debris monitoring as the first motion, is that correct? Okay. Okay, so I'll call that motion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The next motion would be for disaster recovery extension.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second for extension on disaster recovery. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried, thank you. Mr. Norton, you're still up with the consideration of a contract award for burial opening, closing, and amending the fee schedule?
Absolutely. Last meeting, this body asked me to come back with the award for the grave opening and closings, and a fee schedule with a proposed administration fee attached to it. So, we'll put a 15% number, we've done some checking around, and that is a, a reasonable number to put on that. So I've got any questions?
I have a comment. I don't, I don't have any problem with 15%, but why do it $7.50? I mean, let's go to round numbers, like start with a thousand instead of 977. $23 is not gonna cost anybody, just make it easier to do, and go through the numbers and round them up to like $1,100 or whatever, you know, because I understand 15% on top of it, but why don't we just make it easier, simple numbers, instead of having all these 25 cents and 50 cents and $7?
Well, they're not proposing to get rid of nickels and dimes yet.
I'm sorry?
Treasury's not proposing to get rid of nickels and dimes yet.
I didn't understand.
I like the idea of.
Just rounding it up.
Okay. Okay.
Absolutely.
There, there are two items here. One is the contract award for the bid for the burial openings and closings, and one is amending the fee schedule.
That is correct, sir.
So, let's talk, yes, I need two motions anyway, so.
So, could I ask you a question while you're pondering the wording?
Sure.
The administrative fee, what specifically would we be using that for? What is the purpose of that?
Well, the, the use of the fee, or the, the intent of the fee is, I mean, we're gonna actually, we will have staff that is gonna go out and identify the graves, and check and make sure that everything is proper for the families when they get there and stuff. So they, we're still touching it, we're just not actually doing the digging.
So, is 15% like $127, is that appropriate for that use of personnel and man hours?
We do feel that it is.
Okay.
Mr. Norton, I appreciate this. I, I was looking, the reason I was pausing is, I feel like you've been here for so long presenting this, and I do like round numbers, but I also wanna let you go, be free and execute this plan. Can we do a motion that rounds the numbers, or is that a comeback in two more weeks?
Let's, let's round it up in the motion and be done with it.
You can, you can, yes. You can make a motion that changes that number, and we vote on it.
Okay. I'll take.
Round it to the nearest whole dollar?
Round to the nearest whole dollars, that, I'll make a motion that we accept this.
Not nearest whole dollar, like, that would be 9780. I mean, 978, wasn't you gonna?
In the tens, in the tens? Can we make it to the tens? Round to the tens?
Something like that. It's reasonable to.
Shouldn't we round the numbers to the nearest 10?
And then that would be for the, on the weekdays, it'd be rounding it down to 1,090.
We're rounding.
No, I would, I would. Like, to me, if you take the 1207 and make it 1,200, that's fine, but all the other ones, like the 1,092, make that $1,100. You're talking $7.50. And the 1322, make that either 1350 or 1,400. I mean, it's just easier to be, to keep up with it, and instead of having the $7.
I'll throw this up.
I will remind, you know, these are, everybody's gotta die, and so, everybody's not in the same financial situation. I, I don't like this, I will be voting against it. I, I have been pretty vocal about the, the whole thing in the first place, that, you know, I would have liked for us to try to make this less expensive. You've got so many people in our community who are already having to pay double what we were paying for the grave. Now we're paying a whole lot more for the grave openings. Funerals just got much more expensive in a time where it's just harder. And we're talking about rounding up because we just don't like it? That doesn't make sense to me.
Well, I mean, it's not gonna stop anybody. They're gonna, I mean, if they've got $460, they've got $500. I mean, I don't think, at that point in time, that's gonna, cause we're looking at charges that another company would charge us to do it, is majority, plus we have time out there on the job, certifying that they did the right thing, or verifying they did the right thing. And if there's any problems, we're gonna be the ones that face with, dealing with it, not necessarily that company that we've contracted with. So I think it's only fair that we charge something, cause we've got a lot of time and money in this thing when we do.
I, I wanna take a stab at a motion. I do hear what Cynthia says, and I do, do respect the hard work that you put into these numbers. My motion is gonna be accept the fee schedule as presented.
Okay, I'll go with that, but I just think that.
I'm with you on the round numbers, but I'd sense it what Cynthia says, round it, round it up even more, let's accept your wisdom and experience putting these numbers together. And I'd like to just accept it as presented.
Okay, that's the motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Motion to second, and we're doing this a little bit backwards, because we're, we're amending the fee schedule before we've accepted the, the award, the contract award, but that's okay, we're not gonna back up. I have a motion and a second to accept the fee schedule as presented. Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So 6-1 vote on the fee schedule. And then I need a co, another, another motion to accept the contract award as presented or recommended from, from staff.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second, we approve the contract as presented by staff, recommended by staff. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign.
Aye.
Motion carried, 6-1. Thank you, thank you, Norton. The next item on the agenda is the consideration of an ordinance to amend the code of ordinances, Chapter 10, Environment, Section 1036, noises. If you'll recall, at our last meeting, we discussed this item, but particular, the construction of industrial sites, and you have the change before you. It is the change that we suggested to 8, to 8:00 PM. Nothing else has changed in the ordinance. Are there any questions? Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion to second, we amend the ordinance, code of ordinances, Chapter 10, Environment, Section 1036, noises as presented. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried, thank you. The next, Ms. Smith, is discussion on potential zoning ordinance changes to regulate short-term rentals.
How are you, Ms. Smith? Thank you, Mayor. Let you know, we're moving forward with the directive you all have given us from the retreat, and then back in April, and Mr. Phillips brought to you some suggested ordinances you gave us authorization to go forward with. But before we get to initiate a formal zoning procedure, we wanted to kinda propose or show you what we're thinking about, to see if this is in line with what you all envisioned these changes would encompass.
Well, the agenda came out Wednesday, and here it is Tuesday. Council members have a cha, have had a chance, I'm sure, to read over it. But this is a fairly new topic of discussion for us, back in 21, I think, was when we did?
2018, we looked at it. From a standpoint of ordinance, we had a couple of public hearings then.
Right.
And then at that time, y'all tabled that, and then it came back up this year. And so we took the 2018 ordinance, and we kind of layered it in with some other ordinances. Peachtree City recently did, we took some examples from what they just passed. And the idea is to have more responsibility, more accountability for these individuals who want to use their properties for short-term rentals, to give the city the ability to monitor that, to require registration, to require a business license to be involved along with that as well.
So I would suggest, instead of protracted discussion this evening regarding this, that we've had the first glance to look at, that we come back, that we give staff guidance to craft an ordinance, and come back to us. We'll have the one meeting in June, we, we'll need a public hearing on this too, right?
Well, right now, we have, kinda keeping this thing tracking along, we have it advertised for the Planning Commission, June 10.
Okay, so it wouldn't come back to us until July. So, that's where we are with this, or if, if you've got any comments or questions, direct them to Mr. Phillips during the interim, and we move forward in that regard. Anyone else? Anyone object to that plan? Okay? I don't think I need, Mr. Sears, I don't think I need a motion on this.
No.
Staff understands where we are. Okay, thank you, thank you. The next item, as we move to visitors, is a request from First Baptist Church to close Brown Street between West Washington and Madison during VBS Vacation Bible School, June 9 through 13, from 8:00 AM to 12:30. I'll entertain a motion.
I'm moved.
Second.
Motion to second, we approve the request. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried. The next is a request from Carnegie Library Foundation to close West Broad Street from Lagrange Street to Brown Street, and block parking spaces for books and bikes, celebration on Saturday, August 9, 6:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Any discussion? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second, approve the request. Any dis, any discussion or questions? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried. The next is a request from Corner Arch Gallery to close North and South Court Square for the annual Labor Day Festival on Monday, September 1, from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second, we approve as, as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried. The next is a request from Storyteller Studios LLC to film at Wadsworth Auditorium at Oak Hill Cemetery, June 8, from 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM, I believe, is there a representative here at this?
Yes, sir, John Tierney.
If you'll state your name for the record, please.
John Tierney.
John, nice to meet you. How are you, sir?
I'm doing well, thank you very much.
Good. Questions of council for Mr. Tierney regarding the request to film? I've had some interaction with Ms. Haddon during this process about the filming, not at Wadsworth, totally okay with that, get that, but the filming at the cemetery, and a suggestion was made to her today from me, and I assume it got back to you about changing the location of that filming, over to, on the other side of the street from the main cemetery at Oak Hill, commonly known as the Presbyterian Cemetery, although the city owns it. Are, have, are you okay with, you looked at that, are you okay with that?
I haven't personally seen it, but I have gone through with my other producer and my director, and they have approved that, that shift across the street to make it, if it's, it's more convenient for the, for the town.
Well, it's not so much a matter of convenience, it would be a matter of inconvenience.
Yes, yes.
If someone came on a Sunday from wherever, Nunnan or out of town, to visit a loved one in the cemetery, and found that a film company was shooting, and they couldn't get to the grave site. So, and we, and we think it's less likely that it'll happen on that older section across the street than, than it would normally on the newer section in, in Oak Hill.